You do realize that it weighs, what, 30,000 pounds?
I guess we are set to go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
And you're responsible for making sure it stops and doesn't hit anybody?
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the January 18th, 2017, normally scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. As is our practice, this meeting is going to be broadcast live on WCTV. Also, an audio recording is being made by our Recording Secretary, Ms. Ruiz. So, that being said, the first thing on the agenda is public participation. Is there anybody out there? Oh, it's an empty house tonight. Anybody out there who would like to address the committee? Seeing no stampede, let's move on to good news. Mr. Swett, good news?
Not at this time, thank you.
You're welcome. Judy? Jamie?
No.
Oh, come on.
Do you really want me to share?
Yeah.
Okay. So, last week, we went to districts for DECA, and everybody did really good. So, yeah, that was awesome.
Good.
That's great.
Excellent. Excellent. Cliff?
I'm also.
Mary?
I'd like to just congratulate the Superintendent on being chosen out of 52 candidates to be finalists in Franklin.
Thank you.
I think that's pretty amazing, a good accomplishment.
I have good news.
I know, I know.
Oh, well, I was gonna get to you last, but...
You go right ahead.
No, I'm all set. It's all yours.
I have good news. I would like to piggyback on what Jamie had to say, and our DECA students at district competition had 13 gold, 7 silver, and 13 bronze winners.
Wow.
And also, we had a number of students who placed in the top 10. So, congratulations, and we wish them the very best as they head to state. Last evening at the basketball game, Jovan Thomas scored 1,000 points, and so congratulations, what a wonderful honor. And Monday, this past Monday, we had the MLK Award recipients. Congratulations to the outstanding award winners, and we certainly appreciate the Boys and Girls Club for hosting this marvelous annual event.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Jordan Phillips did an outstanding job.
Yes, he absolutely did.
Minutes of the meeting from January 4th. May I have a motion to accept, please?
Move to accept the minutes of January 4th.
Second. Thank you. Any additions, corrections, et cetera, et cetera? Hearing no objections, all in favor? Aye. Aye. 5-0-0, thank you. Next on the agenda is the High School Student Advisory Committee. Now, ladies, come on down. It's my understanding that you are here without a large presentation of 40 or 50 slides, and are here to answer any questions that we might have concerning the goings-on at the high school. So, what we're going to do, we're gonna open this up to the committee to ask what's going on at the high school. I would like our questions to have one caveat, and that is, as much as these two young ladies know everything that's going on at the high school, they don't know anything about the budget process, so I would like to kinda leave that out of the mix if we can. So, Mary, you gotta ask something about what's going on at the high school.
Can I just ask a general question as to what's going on at the high school?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what's going on?
That's about as general as you can get.
Would you like...
What would you consider to be key points of things that are going on at the high school?
Things going on with our council, or just the high school in general?
I would... Let's start with the council, and I'm sure other people will ask.
Okay. So, at the moment, we are working on kind of updating the summer reading projects to try to get more kids to be involved and almost enjoy the summer reading, rather than just hate it and dread it.
I was one of those, by the way, one of those students that hated and dreaded it. But ironically, as I got older, as an adult, I went back to those books that I was exposed to. So, it's a good thing to be exposed to them. Great, thank you.
Dr. Soubia?
Well, I've got lots of questions. My first question is, how is Mr. Palladino behaving?
You should know the answer.
You don't have to answer that question.
You should know the answer to that.
One of the things that we did at my school, and we had kind of a unique thing, and I've talked to Mr. Palladino about it, is reviewing the handbook. Does your group do any work with reviewing the handbook?
Not as of yet.
Well, it might be something you might wanna talk about.
That's a good idea.
A student perspective on the handbook, particularly the code of conduct, provided an awful lot of valuable information for the administration, so it might be a good thing to talk about. And I guess, just keep doing what you're doing. Are you happy with the school? Are most of the kids happy with the school?
Yes, I think so.
You think so? Okay. You would tell me if they weren't?
I promise.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lazarus.
You're welcome. I'm gonna reserve my questions for the end. Mr. Swett?
Are you familiar with the expression, "telling truth to power"?
I am.
Okay, would you explain it to your classmate?
Okay.
We all set? Okay. So, this is a wonderful opportunity to tell truth to power. You've got the Superintendent, you've got the principal, you've got the school committee, and we really, really do wanna know what's going well and what could go better. And as long as you're constructive about it, which means your whole reason for bringing it up is to make the school better, as compared to personalizing it and talking about an individual person and criticizing that, an individual person, the people in power are actually grateful to get that kind of feedback. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, what would you like to tell us that's the truth about things that are not going as well as they perhaps could, and what you think could be done to fix it, and what's going really well?
Well, I think this year what's going really well is the increase in freshman involvement in many clubs, because I've been part of most of the clubs at the high school since I was a sophomore, and this is the year that most freshmen have joined a club and actually stayed part of the club for this long.
That's great to hear. That is great to hear. Anything else that's on the good side?
Well, last Friday, right, this past Friday, the girls' basketball team did a huge fundraiser for the granddaughter of one of the administrative administration. She is three, I believe, and she's battling cancer. And so, they did a really big fundraiser for her, and she was really involved, and it was just, it was a really good thing that they did.
That's outstanding. Okay, so, and how about that, the things that could go better that we might not be aware of?
I think for both of us, we're more on the positive side of the school spectrum, so we're really...
Yeah?
We'll get back to you.
Good answer. Okay, it's a deal, but I'm counting on it. Thank you.
Have you both been on the Advisory Committee for more than a year?
Well, the school kind of just started it this year.
Okay.
So, we've both been on it this year.
Yes, okay, so, it's been... I remember when you came in September, spoke. I just wanted to ask you, what typical things do you do at your meetings? What have your agendas been like? What topics come up?
Well, we usually meet during the advisory period and run a little bit into the next period or lunch, and we just kinda talk about what's on our minds, what we've been thinking about since the last meeting.
Do you wanna share any of your topics?
Well, usually, we bring up things that either, like, we're involved in, like, with the school, that we think that, like, we should be sharing with Mr. Palladino, like, good things, things that we might need advice on, like, on how to run. For example, the junior class is interested in putting on a dance, and one of our representatives had talked to Mr. Palladino during the meeting, and had asked him, like, questions about, like, how we should do things, and who we should talk to, and stuff like that. So, it's a good place for us to not only voice our opinions and voice our ideas to the administration part of our school, but for us to also get advice on how to better our classes and our clubs.
Sounds good.
Well, I saved myself a last. I'm allowed to do that, I guess, for another three meetings. Last couple of years, I've been teaching at Quincy College in Plymouth, and they've, last year instituted a new evaluation program, which is done only by students. The dean doesn't come around with a big packet of papers and sit in and watch and ask for a lesson plan and all that. It's all done by students. Has anything like this come up in your committee, number one? Number two, how do you feel about students evaluating teachers? Yeah, I'm really putting you on the spot here.
Well, nothing like this has come up to us before, but I certainly enjoy the idea of students being able to evaluate teachers, because we're the ones that are really learning from them, and we're the ones that can give the honest opinion, as we're in their class every other day, and we're with them for 83 minutes, and we're, instead of an administrator or another teacher coming in to evaluate them, rather the student who's learning with them every single day.
I agree with you. Madam Superintendent? Nothing? Well, you have midterms. You're in the middle of them, are they starting tomorrow, or?
They started on Tuesday.
Yeah, we're halfway in.
You're halfway in. Well, I don't wanna keep you any longer unless somebody else on the committee has something that they wanna ask. Go home and study for midterms. And thank you very much for your coming here and speaking with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McMillan?
I just...
Good evening.
I have just this, the one item which is, well, the expenditure report for December and transfers I'm requesting. Just before I begin on the expenditure report, I thought I would just let you know that we did take delivery of the new dump truck today for the fields and ground team, and the new driver education car, so we're just getting those paperwork done, and they should be on the road hopefully tomorrow or the next day. So, as for the expenditure...
That's the sort of thing that excites you?
Yes, it's very exciting.
Really?
Did you take a ride?
Brand-new, shiny buildings. Not yet. It's not legally, cannot legally be on the road yet, so, hey, 'cause we're getting the plates transferred over from the old vehicle, so, but that should all be done within the next day or two, which will be good, so, that's great. Then, to the financial report, so, I did present to you a couple of weeks ago on the November financial report. The major change since then is that we've added a lot of purchase orders for out-of-district costs, so that's as the contracts have been finalized for the students we're providing, we are paying for tuition for. We then create the purchase orders, and so as they've all come online, there's about 750,000, we've essentially caught up with where we were at the same point last year. But, you know, overall, we're still, you know, in a relatively good position as compared to last year. At one point, I would just, one thing I would just point out is that the, for salaries, our Unit A staff have a mid-year increase of 1 percent, so, we'll spend slightly more on teacher salaries, for example, in the second half of the year as we have in the first half.
But that's budgeted.
But that's budgeted, and also, last year, we had 0.75 percent, so, you can, you're still kinda like this, like...
They must be excited about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big payday. So, as I mentioned last time as well, our big areas concern our transportation and building, and maintenance of equipment and building. We are working to reduce the cost of transportation through recruitment, so we can do more of those runs in-house, and also cost trading, so working with other districts and collaboratives so that we can reduce the cost of out-of-district transportation. And then, for building maintenance and equipment maintenance, we do now have access to those free cash funds that were approved, and that is helping to alleviate some of the pressure, 'cause some of those funds were for HVAC repairs, amongst other things, and then, and also, I'm asking for a couple of transfers today, which will help with that. So, is there any questions about the expenditure report?
I was pleasantly surprised. We're in relatively good shape.
Yep.
And as you say, it's pupil services, that broad category...
Yeah, yep.
...that is the only thing that worries me. What is the biggest hurdle associated with finding drivers now that we have a better bus fleet, so that we don't have to hire outside vendors to transport? I guess it's mostly sped out of districts, right?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
What's the biggest hurdle? Do we literally not even get anybody responding to our ads?
So, we get some, so, there's, I'd say there's two, a couple of different hurdles. One is the state and, well, the federal government and the state has increased the restrictions on who can become a bus driver. The tests are more stringent.
The federal government?
Yes, which has made it more difficult.
I don't remember ever taking a federal government test.
But it's, then, I believe it's they influence what tests are set by the state.
Okay, so, it's an act... Okay, so, the test is more difficult?
That's my understanding, I mean, it could be, yes.
Okay, so...
And that has made it more difficult for people to, so, that's essentially, that's just restricted some of the supply, which has made it harder to recruit, so...
So, we essentially advertise on an ongoing basis?
Yes, yep, running adverts.
And then, and the number of people responding is...
Small.
Very small.
Yeah, the other prop...
But we're not losing people due to salary?
We're not. We do seem to have a much more stable workforce now than we had last year, so, whereas last year, as you say, we were losing staff, that doesn't seem to be happening quite so, that doesn't seem to be happening as much, so that's reassuring.
So, when we make offers...
And we have added staff. The only one, the only other one thing I would say that's, and it's just a system problem, is, you know, some staff, some bus drivers we've had apply, they want some guarantee of a minimum number of hours, which we're not always able to give. You know, they wanna, they wanna work, you know, 30 hours a week, and we can't always guarantee that.
Are they looking for a minimum number of hours, or are they looking for benefits?
It seems to be the number of hours, although I can't see why...
Given what we're paying with these outside vendors, it almost seems like we ought to think about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's interesting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Do you also think that it was the time of year when we ratified that contract with the bus drivers, when we had a different pay scale? It was just before school opened?
Yep.
You know, don't, people might already have jobs?
Have jobs, yeah, yeah, and there is a lot of competi...
More hopeful?
And there is a lot of competition for these drivers, that's why we've had to increase our salary. So, we are, I mean, we are definitely competitive now, but sometimes not enough to get to win, to sort of steal people away from other positions.
Also?
Yes.
Mary?
I just find that really interesting, because I know, I'm on the Cape Cod Collaborative Board, and I know that we actually contract with them to do out-of-district.
Yep, yep.
And they pay their drivers less, like...
Less, yep.
Twenty dollars an hour.
Yep, yep.
So, it's interesting, you know, that we're having such a struggle.
They have, I think they have fewer drivers, although, because obviously, we have all our in-district runs to run as well, so we have more demand for drivers than they do. And we are slowly adding drivers, so, you know, I think what we'd hoped is we'd see this big, huge influx of maybe six or seven new drivers. It's not quite been that much, and we are adding incrementally. We get every new, every few weeks, you know, I'll see another one come in, a couple of being interviewed, so it is start. And it also, also, people leave for reasons unrelated to salaries, you know, they are on maternity leave, or they just are moving to live with family in a different part of the country, so those things also happen in trying to plug the gaps.
And I have another out-of-district question. I realize that we were in worse shape last year, however, it still makes me nervous to say, see that there's only 16 percent left in there, and then you're asking for another transfer from that account?
Yep.
And that, and, you know, just from my experience, out-of-district is a moving target.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, it makes me very nervous.
So, the, eh, so, we have the 60, so, all the students we know about have a purchase order created for them, so that's 16 percent.
To the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, exactly, for the full cost of their tuition, as we know about, but as you see, you know, that's the known, knowns, unknown knowns, so that the students who could come in that we don't know about at this point, or could require to go out of district, so we're trying to, you know, and that's why, as you mentioned, the transfer, we're trying to maintain students in the district whenever we can to avoid those costs escalating. The one, I was just gonna say quickly, is, so the area, where we, where we do have room to, if we do have an unforeseen, is in Circuit Breaker, so we do have those funds, which we try and spend a year behind, so that we're carrying a balance, so that if we do have a huge student come in, you know, with a huge tuition cost attached to them, we're not breaking the bank, and we're not, you know, blowing up our budget.
Right, but couldn't it affect the next year?
Pardon?
Couldn't it have an abdominal effect on the next year? Because if you're using those funds, and you're trying to save them while the following...
So, what would, what would happen is, so, every year, so with Circuit Breaker, we try to spend the funds we're receiving this year, next year.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, doomsday scenario, worst-case scenario, we have our costs explode, which doesn't look, I mean, I would just say, also, we're, as we get, the other thing is, every week we get through, every month we get through the year, the likely cost goes down, because you've got fewer months left to the end of the year. So, obviously, if, so if a student came in now, we're still only on the hook for a few months as opposed to, you know, five months as opposed to a whole year.
Right.
But doomsday scenario, someone, you know, four or five students come in, and we are, we have to use up all our Circuit Breaker, then what would happen next year is we'd be using the money as we receive it, which is obviously still...
Which is dangerous, too.
Really not where we wanna go, not where we wanna be, but just, I don't know, if it provides some reassurance that we're, we're a couple of steps away from the out-of-district tuition exploding so much that we would start to impact on other parts of the budget. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm not saying it could never happen, but we have contingencies in place in case it does.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it would never happen.
Yeah, yeah, right, I know, I know.
I don't know if, well, we'll see if anyone, but it connects to the transfers.
The transfers, yep, yep.
So, my question about that transfer from the collaborative to get a para...
Uh-huh.
So, I guess my, my question is, is it a permanent, a Wareham employee, or would it be like a sub-para?
It's, well, we have advertised, so providing we're able to find somebody, it'd be a, it'd be a permanent employee.
Have they already, and I don't know if you even know, you know, I know that with my experience, sometimes we try first with a sub-para to see if it's gonna work out, you know, and if it doesn't work out, some, it's kind of questionable whether or not to hire a, a full-time para.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna, I don't know, I know we wanted to post a position, so, I don't know how far they've gotten in the selection process, or, you know, how well it might work out.
Okay.
I can answer that.
Thank you.
We have tried a para, and this para has been, is a shared classroom para, and because of the need, we need to be able to have a full-time person, so the, so the student has had the experience of working with a para, so we do believe that it would be a good match, providing we can find the right person, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mary and also?
Yep.
Cliff? So, let me get this straight in my, in my head, 'cause I'm a little slow when it comes to numbers.
Right.
What you're telling me is that the normal situation, in terms of the out-of, out-of-district placements...
Yep.
...has been PO'd.
Yep.
So, technically, that 16 percent that's left is your safety valve, is that correct?
Yep, that's our sort of first initial safety valve, and, sorry, I should, and also, there are other costs, so, for example, and this is where I'm starting to strain out of my expertise, but students may go on, for example, 45-day placements, so if there's an issue with a student...
Right.
And that is not yet, 'cause we don't know about that yet, so that's not, so...
We don't know what that is, but, but our commitments, as we know them today...
Yes.
...have all been PO'd.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the transfers.
So, I'm asking for...
I'd like to take these as one vote.
Okay, so I'll...
That's all right, whatever.
So, I did try and include notes with them this time, just to give you some information ahead of time, eh, so you can understand what it is we're trying, what it is I'm asking for. The one, first one we've talked about is to move $11,000 from a, for, from the tuition to collaboratives account to paraprofessionals, a new paraprofessional high school was discussed. The second one is $10,000 from technology maintenance, and this is at the Middle School for technology, from network costs to classroom technology costs. So, the third one is, it's a tiny bit complicated, so we had money in free cash allocated for textbooks, but we thought we weren't gonna be able to do the timing, and we're gonna have to buy the textbooks ahead of time, however, we are now purchasing the textbooks. We were able to wait, which means we don't need the $10,00, the $12,000 that was in the LEA for textbooks, 'cause we're using free cash, and instead, we would like to use that for building maintenance, where we couldn't wait for the free cash, 'cause stuff was breaking in the schools before the town meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right, and then the final one was custodial services, where through savings we've made, working with the town on, eh, at the multi-service center, we just wanted to redirect some of those funds to Minnet, maintenance of building, contracted services.
Okay, any questions on the transfers? Go ahead, Jeff.
Is it fair to say that when you transfer between, among major accounts...
Yes.
...this is the kind of thing that, that comes before the school committee?
Yeah.
But if you wanted to transfer money from the Circuit Breaker account to virtually, certainly to a collaborative account, as an example?
Yep.
Let's say you transferred money and later wished you hadn't.
Yes.
That would not require a school committee vote, is that a correct statement?
So, so, I can't move any money into the general fund, so our overall budget line that we have, that you've approved, I can't transfer money from Circuit Breaker into this, so, and this is slightly technical, but, so essentially, what, but what you can do is move costs around, so, Circuit Breaker, so for example, tuition, instead of, so basically, where we have planned to use the general fund to pay for tuition, instead, we would use Circuit Breaker.
So, you wouldn't technically transfer it in, you just, you just pay for it out of...
Somewhere else, exactly.
And that's why I've never seen it, that transfer in?
Exactly, yes, exactly, and we...
It's a bit of a shell game, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, and, and actually, from this, from the get-go, we planned to use Circuit Breaker, so we have...
I understand.
So, we've actually already created purchase orders, and then when we present our revolving accounts and grant reports on a quarterly basis, you'll see that we are spending our Circuit Breaker.
And the same is true for the school choice account?
School choice, yep.
Yes. Except school choice is, you have even more latitude than the Circuit Breaker.
And what it can be spent on, it just has to be school, it's sort of educational purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome. Judy?
I'm all set.
Mary?
Just clarification on what, what are the custodial services that are being offset at Minnet?
So, the Minnet, we had a couple of things. The main thing was taking down the portables, you know, we took down the portables at Minnet, so, and that was, it turned out to be a little more expensive than we thought, and, and also, it just meant that there's just, there's, we need, so actually, that's already been paid for, but there's not much left in the account to pay for, just general maintenance of the building.
Okay.
Okay. Cliff? I move we make the transfers as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero. Thank you very much. Mr. McMillan, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next is going to be Dr. Schwann.
We were asked to update the school committee as a result of involvement in a consortium we've been invited to participate in. The name of that is MAPLE, and it stands for the Massachusetts Personalized Learning EdTech Consortium. We came upon this when we went to, Robin Murphy and Linda Werner, went to visit a school to look at their pilot program of personalized learning, and at that time, MAPLE happened to be there doing their rollout as to what it is that they plan to do. They are partnered with the Department of Education, Nellie May Foundation, and they're part of Learn Launch Institute, which is out of Boston. So I was asked by Robin and Linda if we might contact them to see if we qualified to be a catalyst member. They have two types of membership, general membership and catalyst membership, and the district has to be ready for the personalized competency-based learning initiatives in order to participate as a catalyst district. And so, we're excited about it. The team members are Joan Siemens, Robin Murphy, Linda Werner, and myself at this moment, with the approval of the superintendent. So I would like to just give you, there are four slides following this, should be brief, and we will be open for any questions. So I, I posted the vision of MAPLE and the vision of Wareham Public Schools as a way to see how we are connected, and MAPLE's vision will help to support the vision of Wareham Public Schools at this point, become a catalyst member, provide our students with a competitive advantage. We are the only school in this area that is involved, and we will be the leaders as we model for other districts personalized learning.
So MAPLE is a partnership between a Learn Launch Institute and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And what's really exciting is that when you look at what MAPLE is trying to accomplish and what our strategic plan is, it works so well together, in that we're both looking for ways to share our best practices. And we are a leader among districts around this area, especially on personalized learning, but we really need to have a group that we can share our best practices with, and this being a part of MAPLE is gonna give us that opportunity that we could share with other districts, talk about our instructional practices, what's working there, what's working here, and move forward in our strategic plan.
You can see from the map that as of December, there were 12 districts that were catalyst members, so we are now a catalyst member, which I think is a pretty big deal. It puts us in a leadership role, and it puts us on a cutting edge in terms of moving forward with personalized learning in this area. So when you look at the map, they're clustered around a certain area, we will be the first district that will be on this end of the state. There is no one in Plymouth, or the Cape, or anywhere. And in our role as one of the catalyst districts, we will be mentoring other districts that want to move in that direction. So one thing we will do is we will host what is called a learning tour, where we will have people from all over the state come to Wareham and look at, or model of personalized learning in our various schools.
Some of the requirements in order to be a catalyst member, we have to have demonstrated commitment to and evidence of personalized learning in the district. We were ahead of that with our strategic plan, and we tied that into our school improvement plans with blended learning. We've already been just looking at personal, personalized learning, so this was really a great fit for us. Again, it, it lets us be leaders in the southeast. We don't have any other schools on this area that is involved in this. There had to be a willingness to share experiences with other districts in Massachusetts, so again, as Linda just mentioned, the learning tours, that'll be a great benefit for all of us. And we have to attend a variety of professional development with other catalyst members, so they have a list of items, and we can kind of pick and choose, but there's about six things that we'll have to do throughout this process.
So, any questions?
Where do you want to start?
So, that, that area on your map to the west, is that the 51st state? My wife is from Springfield, she never really felt she was part of Massachusetts. So, so there's nothing to the west of Worcester that's involved in this, in MAPLE?
No, these, these are the districts that are catalyst members right now.
Okay.
And that is it, and that's why it's an exciting opportunity for us to be part of this.
If you look at, sorry, if you look at a national map of personalized learning, Massachusetts is actually very slow getting into it.
Really?
Exactly, we're one of the lower, lower states.
New Hampshire has really...
New Hampshire, Maine, Vermont, way ahead of us. So this is why it's so exciting to be part of this group, because the department is kind of like part of this, so you know it's going to be a worthwhile endeavor. There you go, good work.
When, the concept of personalized learning, does it inherently involve, um, technology?
It has to involve technology.
I mean, it basically can't be done without technology.
It can be, but the teacher ends up at the copy machine, really, making, you know, 15 copies for this person, or 10 copies for that one, depending upon what needs of the students, whereas if teachers making decisions based on what they push out as a result of what's in front of them on a screen, pushing that out to students, they're the decision-makers, they're in control of what it is, and they can analyze what they think is best practice, but it gets to them in real time.
So is the reason we're in a position to be a catalyst member is because we've actually got a superior technology network to support this?
Yes.
And without that, we wouldn't be in the same position?
Correct.
Right, without that, we wouldn't really be supporting what personalized learning is.
Is.
Plus with our strategic plan, we have already stated that that was our focus, and they really liked that when we had a webinar, they really liked that about it.
Really interesting, really interesting. So what's the next step in this process? Let's, let's assume, this just requires the superintendent's approval, correct? You're, you're giving it to us, this for our information, which I really appreciate, but it doesn't require the school committee to say, "Go."
No.
No.
Right? So what's the next step in this process to make, to, well, another way of asking this is, how will a student or a parent feel the impact of this?
Well, I think we have to start to, we've just started, so we just signed off on this, so tomorrow, there's a meeting in Marlboro, where I'll be meeting the 14 other districts involved, and then, so that's the first step. Second, there's a, February 1st and 2nd, I believe.
2nd and 3rd.
2nd and 3rd, there's a two-day conference in Boston that we have five members of our team that will be going to that. And so as we begin to build and learn from what it is that they're sharing with us, and we share what we're, where we're going and the vision that we have, there should be an impact seen across the board in, in time, once it begins to become part of our, embedded into what we do every day.
New techniques for differentiating instruction.
Well, just to give you an example of Linda and I, when we were up at NADIC, at this opening, that we really didn't know that this was, MAPLE was even there, and it was very exciting to, to hear from them. We met educators and administrators up there, and we've already been in contact with them, and just learning from them, just some of the things that they have found out over the past year, even tables that they use. They bought all this new equipment, and just to have this one conversation, they said, "Yeah, we wouldn't buy these tables again. If you're going to get new tables for your class, get these type of tables instead." So just these little conversations are already, you know, we get thinking about, okay, we can learn from them. They're coming down here, hopefully, within the next few months, to go through our school, to see what we're doing, and give us some help, and we will help them.
Does it have any budget implications?
Not that I have noticed. I, I see...
That's good, by the way.
No, right, what it is, is it would be the professional development, so we have to be careful of what those costs are, but I don't see major costs.
But they're not, they're not charging us any money for this involvement.
Right, as a catalyst member, there's no fee.
There's no fee.
No, no, I wasn't thinking so much of the fees, I was thinking about having the resources to, to actually implement the things that you're learning.
Well, our superintendent's given us the ability to have the resources we need, which are the Chromebooks that we have, so we're really in good shape. I mean, granted that the spaces may not look like we would like them to look, but I don't think there are many schools that have spaces that look right for preparing our kids for the future at this time, so we're to look at it.
It's just more a function of better utilization of existing tools.
Correct.
Sounds great, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Judy?
Yeah. Um, what teachers or administrators are in this group, or does it involve every teacher in Wareham?
Well, we're starting off, just to, with the five of us at the moment, but in essence, everyone is, who's involved with technology, will have access to anything that we provide for them, and Linda will, and has, been training them on all of the techniques in order to do this work already. We would just like to do it better. So I think this is, this will help us do that.
So are you all also doing webinars that, yeah, and then the meetings are, you have, there are quite a few meetings coming up, is that, you know, exchanging?
There are six different times that we have to be involved. They've already done one, I'll be doing the second one tomorrow, and then there's the conference, that's the third one, so it's going pretty quickly.
And the conference that we're attending has, over a thousand people will be attending that, and so there'll be speakers from all over the country, so it'll be...
That's the one in Marlboro?
Boston.
Boston.
And Michael Horn, who is a very big name in personalized learning, he will be one of the keynote speakers there, so it is a real gathering of, of the biggest, of the biggest, of personalized learning, so that is one of the reasons we want to attend that.
And you're one of the 14 schools that are...
Yeah, districts.
Okay, so you, will you be up on the stage presenting?
No.
Not this year. Not yet, not yet.
And maybe a couple of more days, no, just kidding.
July.
Not yet.
And, um, do you visit each other's schools? Are there, you know, site visits like that? Do you do anything with video, you know, videoing classes and...
We will, we will definitely gonna be starting that, yes.
I'm just wondering how, you know, how you can share really well, you know, what idea, I'm sure they have it all planned, I just wanted you to tell me, you know, what, you know, which way, you know, you'd be doing this. I'll be excited to hear more about it, too. When you went to NADIC, did you, were you there with NADIC teachers, or was it, um, just a lot of different...
There were about, there were over 100 teachers, administrators from all around the state. And they, how the tour happened, was you, you selected if you wanted to view personalized learning at the elementary level, the middle school, or the high school, and then we all divided up on buses and went, so we all started together, and then we all went off on our different ways. So there were well over 100 folks there from all around.
Sounds invigorating.
Also?
I think so.
Okay. Mary?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like it's basically an organized professional learning community, is that right?
Exactly, right.
And then my other, it's not anything like Rubicon Atlas, is it?
No, no.
Okay.
No, no.
I was just getting some nightmares up here, okay.
Just saying those words.
And then the, the last question, and I know Jeff has already asked it, but there's truly no cost involved in, including subs, mileage, nothing?
There's some, there's some mileage expense, and that's going to come from, because they're partnered with the Department of Education, we've, we're going to, we've put some of that travel in DSAC.
Okay.
So it looks like we're gonna be okay.
Okay, and no subs, right?
No.
Not at this time, no.
And who was the fifth person again? I'm sorry, I...
The fifth person's going to be Terry D. Felipe, who does the technology.
Oh, good, okay.
And I think Tracy Cote will be going as well.
Oh, that's good.
To the conference, so I think, you know, we're, we're doing pretty well, as far as I'm concerned.
Although Terry would need a sub.
Huh?
Terry would need a sub.
Terry would need a sub, yep. Robin will do it, no, I'm just kidding.
Don't laugh, that's happened.
I've done it.
No, I know, I'm not, I know.
Thank you.
Cliff?
Well, just a couple of quick things, um, sounds great, I mean, it just sounds like a, an organized networking system, which is, which is always good. I just have a, a couple of quick questions. Could any one of you project out, let, let's assume that we've been in this thing for six months, can, can any of you, any one of you project out a specific benefit that we could get from this?
Well, I can certainly, I can't, I can't tell you...
In other words, hypothesize what a specific benefit could be.
I can't tell you six months from now, but I could probably tell you a year from now.
Okay.
The goal is to have students actively, intelligently engaged in their own learning, and in order to do that, they need to know what's going on, and they need to be accommodated from where they are, rather than where somebody's told them they have to be. And so this provides us the tool and the opportunity to actually provide all students with precisely what it is they need to grow in their education, which then empowers them, engages them, and helps them to attain the level of standard that they need in order to make it, make it through. So it's a tool, and also will give teachers more time to formulate meaningful relationships with their students, working with smaller groups, helping them to get where they need to go with data-driven decisions that are informed by real-time data. And so I see this as quite brilliant down the road. I haven't seen it anywhere but in, in...
Yeah, perception.
In reading and in my, you know, in my head, and what I, what, what I think, I believe school should look like, because it doesn't look like that now.
Because, you know, this is really not a new, this is really not a new principle. We've always thought that students should be engaged in their own learning, but you're right, in order to do that years ago, we were, we were tied to this copy machine.
Yeah.
So this, this is good. Now, for the teachers that are real, like me, that are technologically savvy, you say, this won't be, so teachers have a choice whether, whether to, to use this tool or, for lack of a better word, be a little bit more traditional, is that correct? In other words, it's not gonna be a mandate?
No. No, it won't be a mandate, but I, I don't think anyone will choose it otherwise, once they see the results.
Right, right.
So, because teachers will always respond when they see kids doing well...
Right.
And want to know what's going on to make that happen.
And have you had any discussions at all with the WEA on this?
They've been involved in the strategic plan and the school improvement plans, they...
In terms of MAPLE specifically?
Not MAPLE specifically, but I have a meeting scheduled, um, coming up the 23rd, so we'll update them, and they're pretty excited about where we're headed.
Update us, too.
Hmm?
As down the road, update us, too. Thank you.
Anything else? Ladies, thank you very much. Appreciate your time and effort in this, and it looks like an exciting program. Thank you very much. Okay, acceptance of gifts.
Yes, I would recommend that the school committee accept the following gift with thanks, $75 from Janice Barton to the Stage Backpack Program with care.
Thank you, Janice.
Yes.
May I have a motion to accept the gift, please? Still moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero. Thank you very much for that gift.
That's the end of gifts. Now, on my report...
Yes.
...school... School, approval for school bills on, this will be paid on 1/26/17. You have had three signatures, but the school committee needs to approve in the amount of $54,712.38, so I would be asking for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0.
And the next, thank you. The next one, the approval of the pay for the week ending January 14th in the amount of $868,751.15. I would ask for approval.
May I have a motion, please?
It's also been approved by you.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0. Thank you.
And then finally, the update on articles for town meeting. We will not be submitting any articles for the spring town meeting. The articles which we will be submitting will be for the fall town meeting, and so at this point, you have none.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Quick question for the superintendent. Do we have another meeting scheduled of the school building committee?
We, we're waiting to hear back from MSBA. We've been going back and forth with papers, and I believe at this point, we've submitted everything but one item, no, everything. Mr. McMillan will fully update you.
So with the application for Lynette Forrest to the MSBA core program, we have provided all the paperwork they've requested, and there is an MSBA board meeting in mid-February, and once that happens, presumably, assuming that they pass, you know, they approve our application, then we will move into the feasibility study phase, and the first part of that will be to a, to select an owner's project manager, and at that point, we'll start to involve the, and that's where the, you know, the rubber really hits the road for the building committee, and they get much more involved in the process.
So MSBA has everything they need?
Yes.
Okay.
What's up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, school committee reports. Judy, you've got a bunch of things on here.
Sure.
And we've got to take these individually...
One at a time and vote.
And approve them individually.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Floor is yours.
The first policy for review this evening is the AIDS-acquired immune deficiency syndrome school attendance. The only change in this policy was that there was a typo in the first sentence. There were no other changes, and I'd like to note that the school nurses did read this policy, it went through them also. So I'm asking for a vote.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the AIDS policy, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? There being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0. Next?
The next is the automated external defibrillator, defibrillator...
Easy for you to say.
...policy. And the only change in this is what, that we, that we had the entire law, a whole page, you know, that came with the policy. So now we can just note that people can look at the law. We don't have to, have to attach the entire law to the policy for people to read, so we've saved a piece of paper every time that's done. So that's the only change, and it was also reviewed by the school nurses.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay. Core requirements.
There were no changes to this, this policy. They're the same.
Will we accept core requirements? Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
How does this policy fit with this new requirement of, of fingerprinting? Because it, it seems to me, fingerprinting is much more inclusive, et cetera, et cetera, so...
We, we have a policy on fingerprinting.
I know.
Yep.
Is, does, do you still have to core it even when you're fingerprinting?
Yes, yes, you do.
Okay.
Yes, you do.
I had to do both.
I did, too, but it just seems redundant, but that's okay.
Yes or no?
I'll take your word for it.
Thanks for caution.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next one was the hiring policy, and there are no changes to that.
Will we accept the hiring policy?
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Educational services to students identified as homeless or unaccompanied youth. There are no changes to this. The one also stays the same.
Move approval.
Second. Have a motion of second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Special education transportation policy, no changes.
Move approval.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Superintendent's evaluation policy, change the second sentence, months of July and August to month of October.
Move approval.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one, transportation of persons requiring medical attention. There is no change to this, and this policy was reviewed by our school nurses.
Well done.
I knew you'd like to hear that.
Move approval of the transportation persons requiring medical attention.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, last thing on the agenda. Any business not anticipated in the last 48 hours?
I have business.
You do?
I don't think so. I think we have a problem.
We do?
Yeah. I volunteered to chair a meeting on the 15th of February, and I...
I thought it was March.
15th of March or...
Wasn't it?
It's March.
I thought it was March.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was February. Oh, I'm glad I brought it up, then.
Yeah, the I's are mine.
The I's of March, yes. How could you forget?
Maybe we don't have a problem. Hold on a second. I got to check my computer here.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Okay, no problem.
No problem.
No, because I wasn't going to be here on the 15th of February.
But now you are.
I'm not going to be here on the 15th of February.
But you will be here the 15th of March.
Yes.
Okay.
Speaking of the 15th of March, I will not be here.
That's why he's chairing, and Judy won't be.
And I won't be.
Okay, so I'm glad I brought it up.
Me, too.
All right, we have any, any other business?
Yes. I just have one concern, and...
Sure.
It's, I think it's a wonderful, extraordinary experience for the three middle school teachers that went to China. I think that's wonderful. My two concerns are, one, what's happening with the students? There are students that are left behind for two weeks, and also, if they're, if, they must be having subs, I would assume, and is this tying up the availability of subs? Because I know it's extremely hard to have subs, I mean, like Dr. Schwalm was saying, she was joking about Robin subbing, but I know that she has, and I also know some of the other assistants have as well, assistant principals. So those are my two concerns about it.
Yes, it's cost share, so we've received money from the Boston IV that helps offset the cost of subs, so that answers that question.
Okay.
The second one would be as far as tying up subs. That would be hard to say, because it's a day-to-day issue on if we need the sub coverage. As we knew about it coming, we certainly had been planning for that to be covered. And the third question is, like any good teacher, plans are left, and the teachers that are at the exchange are exceptional teachers, and they certainly left detailed plans.
I'm sure they did, but it's still not the same as having them there.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
Not, may I have a motion adjourned, please?
No, I guess I'd just like to say one thing, just thinking about it, you know, what you were just saying. Teachers have professional development all year long. Teachers come and go for professional development.
But not two straight weeks.
There, there's been times when that happens. I mean, teachers, you know, have professional development during the school year.
Okay, but very rarely is it two weeks.
That's a long time.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Not to prolong, but I appreciate both my colleagues' comments, but the way I look at it is, I wish we could afford to pay our teachers more, and these kind of opportunities hopefully differentiate us from other school districts, so I think net-net, it's just a plus.
Thank you. Anything else? Will we adjourn?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Night.